Oh, sounds like Andy.
Andy's on an airplane, isn't he?
Well, that's what he said, but just thought it was the voice of Andy.
It didn't sound like him.
It was him.
Okay.
All right, YouTube's got Pat some screen up.
All right, so now you can see it moving down.
Okay. All right, I think we're good now.
Okay, we'll sort of do a false start there and I will now turn it over to Jeremy to introduce and explain the proposed ordinance amendments.
All right, perfect, thank you Ethan. The first one, this would be to amend Article Three definitions. This removes the definition of cottage from the ordinance and then the four references to the use when it's allowed currently as we discussed last meeting. And so the, again, the idea is just to remove this from the definition section and remove that from a permitted use with the understanding that this was really duplicative when we went round and round looking at what dwelling and dwelling units were defined as currently and that dwelling units are allowed and they're allowed to be seasonal already. So that's what Article Three is, the amendment to the definition section. I had no comments from anyone or concerns on this one. So if the board wants to chat about each one, we can, and otherwise I'll go right to Article Five. Everyone good?
Yeah.
Ethan, you ready?
Sorry, muted again. Yes, I think we can go ahead and introduce them all first in that discussion.
All right, and then amend Article Five Administration Enforcement. This is a new Section Five and then a renumber. This amendment would ensure that the town shoreline zoning overlay requirements are consistent with state law and Chapter 1000, the DEP's mandatory shoreline zoning ordinance requirements that municipalities must administer and enforce. What this does is it requires a photographic record to be submitted to the code officer along with any required applicable permit applications and supporting materials and then submit no later than 20 days after the completion of the project or development post-construction photographs of the shoreline vegetation on the development site. That is consistent with state law and they're pleased that we're moving forward and getting this in our ordinance. We have to adopt this, so that's that one. Pat, if you can just scroll your screen up.
Right, Jeremy, just to be clear, so that one, as you're saying, is pretty much state mandated.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then amend Article Six Nonconformance Section, Section Four Nonconforming Structures. This amendment would allow, this is kind of tied to the village and village extension district amendments that we're proposing later that would allow these dwelling units to be installed and would not consider them, right there is the amendment change, for the purposes of nonconforming lots with structures, the conversion and or expansion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family shall not be considered an increase in a nonconformity on nonconforming sewer lots. So that would again facilitate people to use their existing, again, we talked about with structures, to add a second dwelling unit would be considered an increase in the nonconformity. Can move on to the next one. You'd like, or we can talk about that one if you want. Keep going?
Further down?
No, I'm asking if we should keep going.
Oh.
Pat, yeah, if you can go back up there. You ready for me to go to the next one?
Keep going.
Okay, so this one is amend Article Eight, Section Seven, the Village Extension District, and this would allow multifamily dwellings on lots in the village extension served by public sewer. It would allow two-family dwellings on sewer lots without an increase in lot size per dwelling unit. And that's for two-family, and reduce the minimum lot size for lots without public sewer from 40,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet, which is consistent with the state's minimum lot size regulations. And fourth, the amendment would increase the maximum building coverage for those lots from 10% to 25%. And we had talked about those previous. You want to keep going, I can keep going and then we can talk about them all.
Yep.
All right, and then this is, the fifth one is to amend Article Eight, Section Seven, Tradition Village District E Standards. This would allow existing single-family dwellings on existing nonconforming lots of record in the traditional villages to be converted into a two-family dwelling and it reduces the lot area for multifamily units in the village to 7500 square feet per dwelling unit to an S to 5000 square feet per dwelling unit. That's what those do. And then number six, amend Article Ten, Part One, Section One, Standards in the Shoreland Area Overlay. This is just adding a section, this is again to make sure that we're consistent with the state Chapter 1000 guidelines. I can read the whole thing, but this is an existing ordinance says minimum lot standards, multiple structures. If more than one residential dwelling unit or more than one principal governmental institutional commercial or industrial structure or use is constructed or established on a single parcel, all dimensional requirements shall be met for each dwelling unit or principal structure except for those dwelling units or commercial industrial structures located in the B1, BR, and BH. And then we added, when determining whether dimensional requirements are met, only land within, land area within the shoreline zone shall be considered. And this section comes out of, again, the standards in the shoreline area overlay zone, which is in the Performance Standard Section, Article Ten. Next one.
That's all I have, Jeremy.
That's it, that is right, that's all we have.
It's not so bad.
No.
All right, that is a lot, but thank you, Jeremy, for the introduction. I'm thinking now we can take down the shared screen and if we need to bring it up, we will, we'd be on call for that, would you, Pat?
Yeah, that's fine.
And so let's see here, so we have Anita, Mark, Crystal, and myself. Is Pat a sitting member tonight? Do we need to bring her on board?
I think you can bring her on board, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so we're going to appoint Pat as a voting member of the planning board for tonight from alternate. And we will go in now to the public comment portion of the.
Well, before that, you actually have a little board discussion and then go into public comment after that.
A board discussion?
If you have any questions.
Yeah, I think my thought was that we'd already gone through all of these as a group in the workshops, but I will, if anybody on the board has any questions for Jeremy. Anita?
Maybe I'm a dummy, but I was having a little trouble interpreting the chart under E Standards, Minimum Lot Area, and you have residential and non-residential 10,000 square feet and so on. I think would be, playing the part of someone from the town or any citizen reading this, it would be more clear to me if if under Minimum Lot Area Per Dwelling Unit, that section. Maybe you would say, next to accessory apartments in the next column, no additional increase in lot area required for an accessory apartment. I don't know, it's just, somehow it just doesn't read well to me.
None of it reads well.
When I read multifamily dwellings and then I read 5000 square feet, that doesn't read in a straightforward manner for me to interpret what that means.
You're right, I think we touched on this a little bit, that the way the tables are set up and the terminology, the phrasing and the word usage is not great, it's throughout the whole ordinance. And what I'm going to actually work with Bill Kelly to try to figure out a way that we can pull the information that's out of, that's in all of the tables, because each one of these districts has a table and some of these tables are like three plus pages long just for the table to try to actually make one consolidated, you know, appendix that has the table tabular information differently, so that someone can actually just go to a table and look at what our standards are across the board. And so that's the hope, but I understand if we start monkeying with this language, then we kind of have to do it everywhere throughout, and that was not the goal here.
Yeah.
Yeah, Anita, I wanted to, before, I want to just ask you a pointed question first. Is there a specific part of the accessory apartment one that you're having an issue with, or is it with the table in general?
It has to do with interpreting the table, particularly where it has next to multifamily dwellings, 5000 square feet, congregate housing, 3000 square feet. So I have to do a little mental gymnastics to comprehend that you mean in additional square feet over the 10,000 square feet minimum lot area. So perhaps, you know, I think a way that would be easier for me to read if there were two columns instead of one, where you've got the square footage and in one column you say minimum lot area and then you have that and then the column to the right would be additional square feet required. And then you say two-family dwelling and then you've got that number, or say multifamily dwelling, that number 5000 square feet would be under the column that says additional square feet required. It would be easier for me as a regular person to understand what you mean by that.
I understand what you're saying, I think you just need to look at where it says per dwelling unit and the table is a bad table. And again, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to fix the table holistically for every one of these zones, because if we're going to change it here, we should really change it everywhere. And we're not changing it everywhere because that's another hearing for each one of these and this is not ready. I mean, these need to go to voters, or the proposal is for these to go to voters if they get through the planning select board process, so.
Yeah, I agree.
We can't tweak the table now.
Anita, your point is well taken, it is not a great table and it can be confusing. Fortunately, we have wonderful staff on call in town to help people if they have questions with the table. They can call, speak to Jeannie or Jeremy or Rosie to get information if they have a question about how the table applies. It's not like everybody in the town is going to read this and get quizzed on it. It's only, we're looking to do these developments and so they're going to be in discussions anyway. But it is, it is a point well taken that the table isn't, isn't great.
I also had problems with the last sentence under Minimum Lot Standards under number six, the very last sentence, the one that you added at the bottom of page, page three. As, as sort of a standard citizen dummy that I represent, that I am, when determining whether dimensional requirements met only land area within the shoreline zone shall be considered, I just had a little trouble understanding that.
So if you have, if you have a piece of land, so the shoreline zone has standards, right, the overlay zone has certain standards for lot coverage, impervious coverage, those kinds of things in the shoreline zone, but say your lot is in both the shoreline zone and in the other zone, what this clarifies that that the dimensional requirements contained in the shoreline overlay Performance Standards only apply to those areas in the shoreline zone, because the way it reads right now, it doesn't specifically say that. And so this is a clarification, that's what that is. This is from.
Clarify it for Anita.
This is DEP's language.
Right.
Okay, so.
How about with a real example, Jeremy, like that place over on Bayview?
That would be helpful.
Um, yeah, I don't want to go into that one a whole lot, because I don't want to potentially stir the pot, but we talked about it briefly where someone was looking to demo a house, build a new house plus multiple units. And we got tied up with the definition of cottage and then this issue of minimum lot standards. And he was looking to do multiple dwelling units within the shoreline zone. And so this, this combined with the going to the new dwelling unit, that getting rid of cottage addresses that situation to make sure that we're consistent with DEP's rules and their requirements.
So are we imagining?
Went round and round over, over what was proposed there and shared our ordinance language with the DEP's Minimum Shoreland Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Standards and said, this is what our language says, if you read it, it appears he can do what he wants to do, even though I know and the DEP knows that the intent and the language of the shoreline zoning minimum standards would not let him do what he wants to do. And so what we're trying to do is make sure we're compliant with DEP's rules.
Okay, so like if somebody had a lot or a piece of land that falls within two zones, the part that's near the shoreline and the part that isn't in his, his or her property, then so the minimum lot standards that are described.
Can you, can I try?
Sure, go ahead, Jeannie.
Okay, so you've got 10 acres and you have 250 feet of shore frontage, that's all, so it's a long skinny lot. Down within 250 feet of the shore, that's the shoreline zone. In that zone, every single dwelling unit has to have 150 feet or whatever, 200 feet of shore frontage, which means that you only have room in, under the shoreline portion of the lot to do one dwelling unit. You have enough lot area for that zoning district to have four or five houses. But you don't have it within the setback because you have to apply all the standards for a lot, the dwelling unit lot in the shoreline. So, does that help?
But what, but beyond the shoreline, you can, you can put your extra dwelling units and, and in that less strict.
Yes.
It's, as long as you can meet the other standards of the district.
Right.
And we just hope and pray that every lot owner that wants to do something can, can visit with Jeannie. And that's all you need.
That's well. That literally is the best part of applying for any permit.
And, and that's the process, and, but that, that language also isn't our language to define, right?
Right, I mean, it's essentially state language.
We could change it, but it's got to be consistent with the state.
Yeah, so. And anyone who's applying for these.
We had this language before us before, right, Jeremy?
Yeah.
And so we had a hearing and, I mean, you know, a workshop on it and everything, so at this point, I'm inclined to just go with it, acknowledging that none of this is perfect. And your comments, your comments are well taken, Anita, but we just, we can't, we can't keep going back and trying to revisit things and revise things that we've already talked about ad nauseam. All right, so anybody else, Pat, you had your hand up, was that to aid in the discussion or did you have a separate point?
Um, I think I was thinking back to the charts and when it goes out to the voters in June, we're going out with the current charts as we're looking at them in this amendment tonight.
Yeah, I believe that's the case and we can, we can make minor clerical changes, like one of them I saw, where was it? Somewhere I saw the date had a comma instead of a slash mark, oh, there it is. On page three at the bottom, Jeremy. 614, 2022. The new text there.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
But something like that can be changed, but yeah, once we approve the language, the language is set.
Yeah, some of these, these amending dates, those are going to change because we, we actually hired a firm to codify all of town ordinances and codes into one document. And so they're going to be actually managing this as we move forward, so any amendments that get approved, we just send the amendments to them and they keep tally of them and they, one large on the front, front end of the document will have a list of all the amendments that happened and what they were, a link to them, so. We won't have, Jeannie won't have to fuss with some of those dates moving forward.
So there's no way that we can, I think you said earlier, just a little while ago, Jeremy, that in order to get the tables sorted out a little better, that would require another meeting and agreement?
Yeah, and what I'm going to try to do is try to work with the town attorney to see if there's a way, because these all go to voters this way, if there's a way to consolidate all of the tables, pull them out of the district sections and just into an exhibit, say Exhibit A, and then in the existing ordinance section, for that, whatever it is, E would be the development standards, reference C Exhibit A, and you go over to Exhibit A where then we will have all of the standards more, they'll be the exact same standards, it would just be laid out differently and easier for people to understand what they mean.
But that won't get done before these changes go out for a vote?
No, what I'm going to try to, hopefully, fingers crossed, we can just do that as part of the new codification process that's happening. If we don't change any of the actual.
Right, it's just a different way of showing the information.
Right. And therefore. The rules, the rules and the limits aren't changing, it's just how it's displayed.
Right.
I think it's clerical in nature, so.
Yeah.
Should be good.
Yeah, and I think that's why Jeremy's going to bill, because he wants to get confirmation of that. Okay, any other questions from the board on the slate of amendments proposed for Jeremy?
Jeremy.
Oh, go ahead.
Jim Elliott.
Yeah, I talked, we're not there yet to the public hearing, I was going to.
Okay, I don't know what, where we are. Okay.
You're not alone, Jeannie. We are just about to open the public hearing, provided that, I'm going to give one last chance for anybody from the board to ask questions. Looks like no, okay, so we're going to go ahead and formally open the public hearing. Anybody from the public is free to comment, we allow comments directly to the Planning Development Director via phone, email, texts, on Zoom, on our YouTube channel, email, did I miss any, Jeremy? Those are the basic means of providing comment.
Yeah.
What about the chat box and Zoom?
Yeah, I can.
Or the Zoom, so. Yeah, anything, anybody who's attending can, the Zoom meeting can raise their hand and, or put in a question.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to just check with Jeremy on any public comment that he's received, because I don't see any. So, Jeremy?
There are none, and I will add that this Zoom link is a, is a public open link, so people can have the opportunity to join this meeting without asking to be invited. I did get comments, Jim Elliott was on the planning board for years, as I understand, before I was here with the town, he called and I spoke with him right up. I think I spoke with him from like 4:45 to 4:55 before the meeting, so. Yeah, he called with some concerns and I know he talked to Jeannie, but he wanted to express some concerns, he said overall, he's not opposed to the idea of going in the village district, going from, in essence, what I reducing the lot size requirements for the two, for a two-family and, and albeit for the multifamily. I did say to him, I said, you know, we are reducing them, there are still, they were, you know, a two-unit would need 17,000 or 15,000 before, and now it needs 10,000, so we're not completely reducing it, but we are allowing them on those grandfather nonconforming lots of record that have existing structures and existing dwellings on them. He had a little bit of concern about it, though again, he wasn't you know, opposed, but he wanted to make sure the town was thoughtful about it and looked at, look at some standards to protect neighborhoods. And, and I, you know, we talked for a while on that issue. So that was his overall comment that, again, he, he wasn't opposed necessarily, but he has concerns about reducing the lot sizes, especially on the grandfather lots of record. And, you know, he talked about.
Put that review down in context for me, Jeremy, a little bit.
Um, right now.
Conforming lot in the village?
Yeah, and right now, I mean, overall, he's concerned about, concerned about not just nonconforming lots, even other lots that currently, if you want to do a two-unit on a village district lot, you would need to have 15,000 square feet. Right? And we're saying, as a matter of right, you can for the most part have one or two families on, on a lot in town, whether it's it doesn't say that you can have it on a vacant lot of grandfathered lot, but a lot with a structure, existing dwelling, it says you can have a dwelling unit, a second dwelling unit on there. And I reminded him too, that I said, looking at the lot, the number of lots in town, the vast majority of lots in the village meet the 10,000 square foot standard, so there's not a lot of lots in town that are substandard. But he just thought about, you know, wanting to express his concern about making sure that it was appropriate for the neighborhood and balance neighborhoods' concerns and issues. It'd say to him, and I'm just, I want to share the conversation, because it's important, I think, to get the input, that we're not getting rid of parking requirements, we're not getting rid of building coverage requirements, so we're still, still have mass of the property is still what it is. And he just wanted to express his concern, maybe look at some standards, doesn't want the wild, wild west. He talked about the planning board maybe reviewing these projects, these conversions are, conversions are the zoning board of appeals as special exceptions. I reminded him to that, because he talked about making sure the planning board of the ZBA can enforce these standards, and I reminded him that these, there are standards already in place that the code officer has to enforce. And when we review a project, comes into our office and say it's a conversion and they have more than five parking spaces, or it's going from a two-unit to a three-unit, there are reviews that happen internally in the office that make sure they comply with buffer requirements and parking requirements and make sure the lot coverage requirements are still, you know, contained within those, those maximums allowed, so. I tried to at least say we're not, to him, that we're not changing, you know, in essence, the built environment necessarily from what's allowed currently, because people can get up to that maximum building coverage currently.
Yeah.
And I did look at the buffer, I will, I did look at the buffer standards and you know, when you start to get above a two-unit, three-units, there are, the code office has to review, you know, more things on buffers between parking lots and between uses, so that is, I just reiterated that to him, that I think he thought that none of this stuff was looked at unless it was by the planning board or the zoning board, and I corrected him on that. Those are the only comments that I have, that he shared.
Okay, so from one person?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did have a, I did have a conversation too, and I'm sharing this one, Nancy Hughes, the Realtor, had a conversation with her and she told me that she wanted the planning board to know that she was in support of these changes as well, and thought that it was kind of a long time coming for the town of Camden to do this, so. So we had Nancy and Jim Elliott, and those are the only comments that I've received on this.
And seeing no more comments on Zoom and you have nothing on YouTube?
No.
Okay.
We're watching on YouTube. I'm probably one, Ethan, you're the other. I'm probably one, Ethan, you're the other.
Anymore, I don't know what I was seeing before, but it did say twenty watching, but I was, it was locked, so. I was like, wow, this is gonna really be a vibrant hearing. Um, not so much.
They they tuned in and then they saw, realized what they were getting and.
We were like, is this thing on? Tap, tap, tap. Okay, um, yeah, so uh, that will, we will then close the first uh public comment period. Um, that's for all the amendments, zoning amendments, going once, going twice, going three times. Um. And now the uh, the board now has, again. The ability to ask any questions.
And and this is generally related to the discussion that we occurred or the public comments that were were.
Right.
Heard.
Keeping it on the pass.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Anita. Unless you just dropped your hand because it wasn't on point.
Um, hopefully it's not too noisy in the background, my husband is doing some sanding in the next room. Um, but I wanted to ask, since Jeremy had an opportunity to have a discussion with a real estate agent, Nancy Hughes. Regarding this change, I was curious as to whether. You discussed uh whether she thought. That this could have some significant impact on helping. Um, the housing shortage, the uh. You know, basically, the the big picture of what we're trying to solve in regarding housing.
Well, I think, um, I think everyone understands that. You don't know. Um, if it's gonna help unless you provide an opportunity for people to do things, um. And so what this does is that it gives people an option. Um, to add some more housing, whether or not it does that or not is another thing. I would also just add that, uh, kind of, I haven't, I wanted to. Want to do a more formal, just. Kind of review of the comp plan, and we talked about it in the past, and the comp plan does recommend that the town move in this direction to address. Housing and lot sizes, and I think that's important for. For the board.
Yeah, and that's that's something that we have, we have, uh, we discussed at length in the um.
Yeah.
In the workshops.
Yeah.
I mean, I I don't think we would be here if it wasn't consistent with, you know, the the town plan.
True. So I got.
Anybody else have any questions for the? For Jeremy related to the public comment? Uh, seeing none, okay, um. I doubt we're gonna get anything here, but we will reopen. For the second round of public comment. Uh, if anybody has any questions on anything that was not already raised, we don't want to have anything repetitive. Uh, please, go ahead now, is your chance. And seeing none here, uh, guessing Jeremy's seen none on YouTube.
No, I got nothing.
Okay. So, no public comments. We will go ahead and close the second. Public. Comment portion. And now is the time for deliberation for the board, no further public comment will be accepted. Um. And uh, this is now up to the board to uh deliberate, and we will. Uh, uh, after the, any discussion, we will move on to an individual vote on each of the ordinances. The ordinance amendments, okay? Anybody have anything they want to say about these amendments?
Not that we haven't said already.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna make it clear, I'll I'll just go ahead and and give a little spiel, uh, you know, we have worked several workshops on these. Um, these are, these decisions are not made lightly and willy-nilly, we we really, you know, gone over them and and talked about them and sent them back for revisions and everything. So, the the board, I think. Uh, although we weren't unanimous in every aspect of every um ordinance change. Um, we were unanimous in in feeling like they were ready to go to the select board to be sent on to the voters and let the voters have their say. Um, I support these amendments, some of them are obviously state required, but some of them are. An effort to, um. As Jeremy noted, provide, um. Options for people for, um. Increasing available housing and and affordable housing, hopefully. Um, but nothing uh can, nothing super targeted, we just, you know, it's kind of like providing options and, um. Go ahead, Anita.
Sorry to be your troublemaker, but I'm suddenly looking at the chart. Under, um. Amend Article Eight Village Extension. Am I wrong that? It seems like it's organized in a different way than the chart right below it. Whereby uh accessory apartments. If you read it the same way as you read the chart at the bottom, you read that. Um. Accessory apartments require twenty thousand square feet and two-family dwellings require twenty thousand square feet.
Well, the reason that is, is because if you go to the definition. Um, remember the dwelling unit is a dw- Based on, um. Um, the state's minimum lot standard, so for septic, in a in essence, for the two units, you need the twenty thousand, you need twenty thousand per dwelling unit. If you look at the definition, and we didn't, we're not talking about that necessarily. Right now, but the definition of accessory dwelling unit. Um. Tried to include it there, it says, uh, and in the village, there's village, um. Is on on sewer, so if I go to. The definition of dwelling unit.
I think the the other distinction, that second chart is for the village districts, so sewer or non-sewer isn't an issue, so it doesn't need to be in that.
Correct.
Chart.
Correct, and if you look at, again, the definition of accessory dwelling unit. Um, accessory apartment. It says, say, that the, um, it describes what it is, uh, but the accessory apartments don't comply with all applicable building codes and is subject to mains. State of subsurface wastewater rules as being amended. As well as the minimum lot size requirements for lots in the shoreline zone, so what we were trying to do there was just. Not have to go reference somewhere else. Um. You know.
But. Yeah, I I under- I understand, but. In in the the one that I initially had asked you about, under multifamily dwellings. It says five thousand square feet, and we are given to understand that that is an additional five thousand square feet over the ten thousand.
For dwelling.
And then you go to no sewer. And uh multifamily, sorry, two-family dwellings. And it says. Twenty thousand square feet, so it's basically in the same kind of. Format. Um.
Um.
Anyway, it. You see why it just, it's. I think, yeah, anyway.
I want to hear what Mark. Can Mark, you want to chime in?
Yeah, it's, it's the way I read that chart, it's. Minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet per red or for residential property. For sewer.
Yeah.
All right, for a two-family. There's no increase in lot area required. For multifamily. It's five thousand square feet. That's per dwelling unit. So, in a two-family, it's still five thousand square feet per dwelling unit. So, and then in the sewer. Its state requirement is twenty thousand square feet. Per dwelling unit. And that's the 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 chart is.
You mean not sewered?
Not sewered.
Not, not sewer.
Sewer.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think the chart is clear uh on that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, it, again, I agree that these tables are not perfect, but I agree with you, Mark, that these plu- the charts are clear enough. Uh, you know, that they're not misleading.
So, well.
So, just to go back.
What it says is in the sewer. In the sewer district. Your minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet.
If you want to create a new lot, right?
Yes, or or if you, I mean, a conforming lot is ten thousand square feet.
Correct.
So. It's. That's just the requirement in in that zone, in the village zone, okay?
Yeah.
So, in addition to that, it's. The requirement is five thousand square feet. Per. Dwelling unit. So. If you have two dwelling units. It's still ten thousand square feet.
Except if you've got a grandfathered lot. That is not conforming.
Right, right, I'm just talking conforming lots.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, we're just liking the table.
Yeah.
So then, if you were going to do a a three unit. Then it would be. Five thousand square feet. Per unit. Fifteen square feet.
Correct. Yeah.
Could you just add? I see why I said. The the two-family dwelling.
Hold on, Anita, can I get Pat in? Pat, go ahead.
Sorry. Oh, could you just add, under the multifamily dwellings, under the sewer column, could you say? An additional five thousand square feet. Is required?
Well. Uh, I think you need to look at top, above where it says single family in the table. And keep in mind that it says minimum lot area per dwelling unit.
Yeah, it says per dwelling unit, right in the heading.
Right in the heading, and it it could be much clearer, but then you follow down. And it says, by family, five thousand square feet. Per dwelling unit. As you go back up to the.
You have a minimum lot area and how much per dwelling unit.
Right.
So the, so the twenty thousand square feet. Next to two-family dwelling units or the accessory apartment. Um, is for the entire building.
Per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit.
Really, so you have to add another twenty thousand square feet if you want two families, a two-family.
That's state law, you've got a number of bedrooms to a septic system, you've got to have a certain amount of lot size to accommodate a septic. Leach field, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is very, even more confusing, because two-family dwellings, no increase in lot size is required. Except it has to have twenty thousand square feet per dwelling unit.
No, you you you're missing the heading at the top that says sewer, non-sewer.
I I understand that.
I mean, that's, that's the difference here, if you're on sewer. You don't have to increase the lot size, because the increase in lot size isn't about lot coverage, it's about providing room for a septic and a leach field.
Okay.
For a number of bedrooms and the, uh, people living in the house.
Okay, so, so it is true.
That's the rationale behind it.
Okay, so, alright. So it is true for two, two-family dwelling. Does require twenty thousand square feet in non-sewer for every dwelling.
Yes.
Per unit, that's the bottom line.
Correct, and you can't even do three units in a, in a. Situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So. I mean, these are not bad questions, Anita, I I realize, again, this chart, we we all know that the table's not great. But at the same time, um, you know, I I I agree with Mark that the information is there. And it's accurate. And it's not misleading, it just takes a little bit of time to, you know. To to.
Even. Even if sewer was in bold, non-sewer in bold, minimum lot area in bold, minimum lot area per dwelling unit in bold, in that existing table would help immensely.
Yeah, totally agree.
Yeah.
Totally agree.
That's why the plan is to put these tables into one or two sheets, rather than, if you go through our ordinance, I think it's gonna take up fifteen to twenty sheets. For each one of their zoning districts. I mean, for the total. Get them into one or two sheets is the goal.
You want them, me to bold? Those headings, that's no big deal.
I know, Jeannie, but we'd have to have them bold it through the whole code and.
No, no, yeah, but it wouldn't need approval.
No, I know, but. I I have to see how they're handling, but maybe we can.
It'd be very easy.
But, that's a whole nother conversation.
If you want the greatest test.
But I think it's a good, a good idea, and 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 maybe if Jeannie's able and willing to do it. And we agree that it's not changing anything, and it's just something that can be done clerically. It might help. You know, and everybody would be a li- little bit happier.
So, Jeremy, when you do the new chart, I volunteer to be your dummy interpreter and. And um tell you whether the, whether your, your citizen dummy can understand it.
Perfect, I'll send it to you over the next year.
You read my mind, Anita. On the chart, the chart ren- the chart renovation revision committee of one.
Alright.
I'll let you know if it makes sense.
Alright.
Looks great. Any other discussions from the board related to the content? Of the uh changes in the ordinances, I know, again, with, as we've said, we've had numerous. Workshops, et cetera. But I still want to make sure we have plenty of time for deliberation and everybody is sure. Go ahead, Crystal.
Um, I just wanted to, to sort of double down on something that's been said a few times before, but that. Especially these lot size modifications are really. Uh, very much in line with with the rewritten, reworked comprehensive plan that. You know, has been approved and has been sent forward, and so I think it's a really important thing to. Be taking this work on and. Uh, I think they are taking the steps that that the town agreed on. So, that's all.
Thank you, yeah. Anyone else?
Did you want to close the public hearing and then do a vote?
I guess I'll just reiterate my concern about. About the uh re- reduction to the twenty thousand square feet in the uh village extension. Um. What we have here is. You know, we have a desirable community, and people come here because. Of the open space and because of what we have here. And we continue to try to. Change what we have here. So, eventually, it's not gonna be that special place anymore. That people want to come to. And. You know, that coupled with the fact that. You know, we're not protecting, you you know, we're 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 promoting growth. But we're not protecting. Existing property holders. And, um. You know, when, when, I I won't do it now while I live here, because I don't agree with it. But, when it's time for me not to live here, I can take, I can sell off. Five lots off of my property. And it's not gonna be a place I'm gonna want to live at that point. But. You know, I'll cash out, I'll prof- I'll profit off of it.
Well, Mark, that would be a subdivision, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Seven, five lots.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and and certainly someone with a, with a, you know, that is something to consider, that that a subdivision could happen anywhere. Um, that has the requisite land space. You know, the space.
Yeah.
And, I mean, even a subdivision would require forty thousand square feet the way it is now. So, what we're doing is we're reducing.
Right, by half.
E- exactly, so I mean, the, you you know, and there will be other subdivisions with twenty thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, it it's not, it's not lost on the board, I don't think, uh, you know, your comments are welcome and and heard. Uh, it's not lost on me, and I won't speak for everybody, but I'm pretty sure we're all aware that we are making a, a, you know, fairly significant change. When it comes to reducing the required lot size. Uh, in the village extension from forty thousand to twenty thousand. However, I will point out that it is, I think, consistent with the town plan. That's been in effect, and that's, you know, and that, and then the current, the current, um. Sort of uh trend that we're having, which is, you know, you know, lack of uh available housing. Um, and, you know, we we don't have, you know, we've looked at maps and we've looked at things, and there aren't as many lots as as you might think that are affected by this.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my general perspective on it, however. It's absolutely true that there are going to be lots that could be broken down into smaller lots than than some people might like that live in the neighborhood. And those people have been on notice, and you're putting the voice forward for for. That population, we haven't had any public comment that we, that it that objects to this. Other than your personal, um, of, you know, interest. Other than your personal um, you know, interest, you know, objection and and it's heard, we we hear it. And we respect it. Um, it it is a choice that we're making as a board. That's my feeling that we are looking at this from a perspective of not, we're not just saying, well, I don't live in that neighborhood, so it doesn't matter to me. We're doing what we think is consistent with the town plan and consistent with the idea that. Providing an opportunity for other people to possibly do something more with their lots. Um, is 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 an advantage. That's.
That's fine. I mean, I don't need a sales pitch on why it's a good idea. I'm just telling you. What my opinion is and you you know, if that's the general consensus. Of the town and they want to move forward on this, so be it. It's just. That, you know, we we all have opinions on it and.
Yep.
And what what we'd like.
And you've actually hit on, you've actually hit on the the most important point. Which is, this is something that will go to the select board and then to the town. And so we're not, we're not the final arbiter here. We're just making a recommendation. And I I still feel okay about what we're what what we're what we're recommending.
And in reality, when it goes to town vote. It it goes to town vote and the majority of the people that vote on these ordinance changes. Just vote yes because they've been, they've been. Uh, vetted by the planning board. And they've been vetted by the select board, so it must be a good idea. So they get passed.
Yeah, and that's true, but it's also true that that we are, we are, you know, uh, representing as best we can the interests of the town. And um while you and I may have a difference of opinion. Um, we hopefully are making that opinion heard. Um, and and seen and then, you know, if there's somebody who has an interest in it, they're welcome to come and join the conversation. Crystal, you've been trying to get in for a minute.
Yeah, I I well, I I wanted to go back to. Something, well, there are a couple, a couple of points, but just. You know, I mean, first is that when you look at the map, like was we keep saying, you know, yes, this, the particularly the twenty thousand. Is only a few spots in like, it's not that much. Um, and all the other standards are still going to apply, so. What a project looks like. It's not going to suddenly become. A crazy mishmash of additional houses and it does what we all agree, it takes a step forward. To. Allowing, sorry, puppy with toy. Um. To allowing. Possible new developments in in, and I don't mean developments in in terms of subdivision development, but just. Projects that will address the issues that we're trying to find solutions to. Um. And. I had another thought, but I. I think we, I think that Ethan, you've really sort of summed up what we've all said. Several times through the workshops and. You know, I don't think we're giving away anything. That's all.
Yeah, I I don't understand that thought process because if. If currently the minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet. And we're reducing that to twenty thousand square feet. That would tell me that every single lot. That conforms in that zone could possibly be affected by this.
Can I? I think there's a couple of things and I I don't have the village map up, the village extension map up. But a fair amount of village extension is in the shoreline zone. And so the shoreline zone standards still apply so that there's an increase in dwelling unit in the shoreline zone. I think it's forty thousand in the shoreline zone per dwelling unit, even if it's in the village extension because it's in the shoreline zone. That section and a fair amount of the village extension is in existing subdivisions.
Right.
Um, the reality that any of those lots are going to be split up even further. It's, I would say, not great at all because they're going to have to come back to sub for subdivision approval. For those changes and most of those lots, generally the houses put in the middle of the lot. Um, so they're not going to, for the most part, really facilitate another house lot of twenty thousand square feet. Um, so I just, I think it's important to know that I I and I get what Mark's saying, I really do. But if you look at the map, the village extension map, and you look at what what portion of that is already existing subdivisions. That would further require further review by the board. Um. I don't think you have as many lots. It it's not open up to every lot in the village extension.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're not going to suddenly see Bayview Street running down Mountain Street. You know, it's not, it's not going to look like that.
I mean, you may see it on Mountain more than you'd see it on Malino. But or, you know, but or, you know, you're going to see it. Um. You know, um, or or more, more on one side of of Washington Street than another. Uh, because the one side's in the shoreline zone, the other side's. Moreland zone.
Well, and if you look at Washington or. You know, on the riverside, you have lots of subdivisions already.
Already.
And then you have shore land, so it's just there when you.
That's true.
And heading out west, you know, Cobb Cobb Road and all of that, that's all subdivision, like, so there's. Limited in that. Stretch that's not sewered that would apply.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's the other thing to remember is the not sewored part. We don't have any, as far as we know, extensive plans to bring sewer out there.
Well, I I will add, let me just add, there is talk. Um, and I don't know how far, how far along it is, is the cooperative that bought the, um, and I think it's important for. Um, this, because I I want to clarify that, Ethan, there is talk of possible sewer extension to the mobile home park. That is owned by a cooperative now.
Um, located where?
Um, mountainside, uh, mobile home park on fifty-two on mountain.
Fifty-two.
Yeah. Um, they've got onsite wastewater disposal now, not a great thing for a mobile home park. Uh, and that's now owned by the park owners, the park.
The residents.
Since owned the mobile home park as a cooperative. Um, so there is talk about them getting funding um to do a sewer extension. That's just out.
But it would just be for the uh mobile park, you're saying?
Well, I I don't know how.
But once you bring, once you bring it out there, then people can tap into it.
Right, there is limited capacity though on adding into the system as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a minimal expansion really in the long term.
Right.
Would that come up Malino Road?
I believe so, Mark. It's the only common, only way I would think it, it's not going to come up mountain.
Right.
Um, yeah. Yeah, there's a pump station down on Riverside. Again, a fair amount of that over on Riverside areas, all shoreline zone. Um, and subdivisions as well. So.
Jeremy, how much purview does the board? Have over um subdivisions if somebody were to divide like Mark was saying on his lot that he were sold and. Tried to make a subdivision out of it.
You've got a lot of. A lot of purview. You've got a lot of say. I mean, there's.
It's a site plan review.
Subdivision.
Right, right, I I understand that, but I didn't know.
And you look.
So you have a certain amount we could say about the spacing of. How many homes they're putting on.
There's a lot of criteria that you can look at, um, and not necessarily about how many homes you could put on. But you've got to look at the criteria. There's impact on the environment, natural resources.
Character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different. Criteria that you review. Um, you haven't had to do one of those yet. Um. Well, you did take a couple of subdivisions, but most of the standards didn't apply because they were just lot line changes. Um, there's water quality, there's, you know, stormwater, there's other things that get reviewed. There's wetlands that get reviewed and have to be identified and. You know, all, there's a lot.
And we're thinking these are aspects that could help maybe keep. Uh, too much population down within a given piece of land with these changes coming.
Um, I'm not necessarily sure that's the case and I don't want to, um. I mean, the dwelling unit, i- if we're at twenty thousand square feet per lot for per dwelling, that's the standard, right? So someone could come in with a subdivision that has twenty thousand square foot house lots. Um, you.
Absolutely.
Won't be able to say you, you can't do that many, but the nature of the land or the environmental conditions or the review might dictate. That, well, because you have. X number of acre, and if you do the math, it says twenty thousand feet per lot. I can have got five acres, I can do this many lots. Well, you gotta take into account streams and the road and right of way and. Ditches, warm water and wetlands and all those things get taken up, so. Need to get looked at, so it's, you know, a little more than. Um. Just.
Okay.
Standard minimum lot size requirement, if you will. But right now, right now, if Mark had a lot and didn't want to do a subdivision and he wanted, had enough road frontage or figured out a way to get a right of way. He could put a lot out back and gets no review by the planning board at all. Right?
Yep.
But if you do three lots, you do. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I mean, again, I'm going back to this, but I do think that's the more likely scenario. Where someone, it's possible, I think, that someone will have a lot of X number of acres. And they can go ahead and carve out one lot without going into a subdivision and sell it off and put a house on there. And frankly, that's what I'm okay with. That's, that's exactly what I contemplate. And I think is fine. You know, adding one house on a five acre lot, to me, doesn't seem like it's ruining the character of the neighborhood. If it's going into a subdivision, if everybody wants to cash out and do a subdivision, and I think that's the way to go. Um, you know, I think we've entered into this eyes wide open. I don't know that that's the 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 best plan for a developer. To have only twenty thousand square feet per lot, maybe that is. Um, but I don't think it's going to be the type of thing that you're going to see. As you drive along any of the roads. Where you're going to see, you know, fifteen houses stretched right along Route fifty-two. It's going to be back off the road and it's going to be in a subdivision. And if the people choose to live in that subdivision, I don't think they're impacting everybody else that much. That's my opinion. Um, you know, I don't think we're going to see an eyesore. Um. And I don't think it's going to drastically affect the character. Of the neighborhoods. I think it's more likely that someone will say, oh, I could sell, you know, carve off this one twenty thousand square foot lot and. Um, sell it off and put a house on there, you know, sell to somebody, put a house in there. I encourage that. Um, I think that would be something that would help alleviate some of the housing crunch that we have. And this is not something that we're looking at, oh, in two years, we're going to all of a sudden have affordable housing. You can't. That's not the plan here. This is a long range plan. This is something where we look down the road and say fifty years from now. Is there more housing available than there was the day we made this decision? Apologies for my dog. He's outside the door of my office and he really wants to come in. I told him the public comment period is closed. Go ahead, Anita.
Um, I appreciate Mark. Um, bringing up this topic and looking at it from the broader perspective. Uh, it is a very important thing for the town to consider, probably not. Uh, more than in one or two uh workshops. Uh, this general discussion, I think, I think we're trying to thread the needle. Um, on an extremely complex problem. Adequate housing. Um, what does that mean? How is, how is that goal actually reached? When do we know it's reached, if it's ever reached? Um. Do, do we want to have housing for every person who wants to live here? Is that even possible? These are all really complex questions. Um. And I think what's driving this uh attempt to make it a little easier to get a little more housing in where the service, particularly where the services. Are available. Is uh trying to begin to solve the issue of workforce housing so that we can actually. Have people living here that uh represent. Um. Not the top elite. Financial group that can buy in, you know, there are people from California and Texas. That are coming. Here, they are climate refugees. They are crowded city refugees. And in my opinion, there is no way. That we can ever meet the demand because we do have a very idyllic. Town here that offers a great deal to its residents. Um, yesterday I learned of people that are. That have bought one of the big inns in town and are. And are going to change that back to a single family residence. And um. Day before yesterday, I was talking to climate refugees from California. And Utah who are tired of living where it's dry and where there are fires and they want to come here where there's lots of moisture and it's a pretty place to live. So it's impossible to solve that problem. And um, the discussion. And how we want to solve as much as we feel we can is an important discussion to continue having. Mark brings up a very good point. Um, we're trying to thread the needle between finding workforce housing and not having things. Horribly impossible to afford. To be ha- able to have a broad pop, um. A broad representation of the population in this town instead of just the very wealthy. So I'd love to hear Mark's comments or suggestions. Maybe, may not be now, but it'd be sometime about how um, how he thinks. We should solve the problem and what is the solution to the problem. So thank you anyway for bringing it up and it's, it's, you know, we'll have to talk about it a lot in this town.
I I I would think that in. Within three years. When we, uh, if we have several more of these, uh. Ice storms and snow storms and uh subzero weather. It might just open up some of the housing market. And it, you know, I mean. It's cyclical. It's cyclical and what's, what's created it is COVID. And, you know, people looking for a change and um. You know, we've had. We've had a few mild winters. But if we have, if we have a few more severe winters. Like I say, I think it's going to thin out.
I think we're kind of getting way off.
We are.
Yeah. Track here. I mean, it's a, it's a very good conversation and a valid conversation, but I think we're. Going far from the tail end of the public hearing on this.
And I I agree with that and I I think also that we did have a lot of these conversations already in the workshops.
I I was just going to say earlier a little while that the other thing I think that is. Kind of helpful to think about with this, with these changes on the, on the twenty thousand is just that. It enables a developer with a few acres to. Think differently about where the houses would be on a multi-unit lot. And can put the houses together. A little closer and maintain some more open space. On on that lot. Um, that's one other thing that the. Dropping the down to the twenty thousand does enable. Which is another reason I think it's a good idea.
Yep, okay. Well, I think we've gone around and around the Mulberry Bush on this one. Um. Are we ready to go ahead and have a vote? Um, I think we're going to take these in turn. And um, Jeannie, would you like me to read each ordinance amendment into the record or can we just go ahead and say, reference the. The agenda numbers, et cetera.
I. I think you could reference the um amendment number based on the agenda. Cottage being the first one, deletion of that would be number one.
Is your name Jeannie?
I would think if you did anything, you would just say the proposal to amend Article Three.
Thank you. I think that's good. The heading would be good. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Thanks, Jeannie. That's why I asked you and not Jeremy. Alright, um. Motion on number one. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to recommend the amendment of Article Three. As in the agenda. Amended to the, is it to the planning board, uh, to the select board?
Send it to the select board for approval.
With a recommendation to go to voters in June, yeah.
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will take a roll call vote. Anita?
Hi.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
That's an eye from me, that is unanimous, so move. Uh, number two, amend Article Five Administrative, Administration and Enforcement.
I'll make a motion, uh, to amend, that we recommend amend the. Motion to amend Article Five as written, recommend to the select board that it be approved and passed on to the voters. If you got that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote, Anita.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
It's an eye from me, so move. Number three, amend Article Six, Nonconformance, uh, Section Four, Nonconforming Structures.
I'll make a motion to recommend amending Article Six. To the select board for approval and public vote.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call vote, Anita.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
It's an eye from me, so move. Number four, amend Article Eight, Section Seven, Village Extension.
Make a motion to recommend to the select board approval of the amendment to Article Eight. And a public vote.
I think we need Article Eight, Section Four on that.
Section, yeah, sorry, Article Eight, Section Seven.
Oh, Section Seven, okay, yep. We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, Pat.
Oh, I.
Anita.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Chris O.
Hi.
And it's an eye from me, so move.
Should probably actually amend that to make that motion, Article Eight, Section Seven, Village Extension.
Yeah, I just was thinking that same thing, you got that, Genie?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, number five on the agenda is amend Article Seven, Section Seven, Traditional Village.
That's Article Eight, Section Seven?
Yeah, Article Eight, Section Seven, thank you.
Make a motion that we recommend the amendment to Article Eight, Section Seven, Traditional Village. For approval to the select board and move to a public vote.
Second. I was waiting for.
You gotta be quick. Uh, roll call vote, Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Anita.
Hi.
And it's an eye from me, so move. Number six, amend Article Ten, Part One, Section One.
I make a motion to recommend to the select board approval of the amendment to Article Ten, Part One, Section One. For approval with a public vote.
Second.
With, uh, with the, um, um, change on that six fourteen twenty-two, does that, do we have to say anything about that?
We have a motion and a second. Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Anita.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
And it's an eye from me, so move. I believe that concludes the, uh, voting portion. Um, I really wanna thank you all for your time and your thoughtful deliberation, it's important. Um, and all viewpoints are heard and, um. You know, we'll see how this all goes with the select board and the voters. Um, the final item on the agenda then is, uh, setting any future meetings. Uh, Jeremy, what's in the pipeline? I think you're muted.
You're muted, Jeremy.
Yeah, I got nothing really in the pipeline right now, um, so I'm thinking maybe we'll take a little break, um, at the next meeting. Uh, which would be the first one in March, if that's all right. Um. March third is when we would normally meet, I think we're in a good place to just take a breather, if that's okay, and then I'll try to regroup and get some. Things working on.
Okay, I would agree with that, does anybody on the board have any suggestions for Jeremy on things to be looking at down the road? I know we've had a lot of things floating around.
I will just mention, uh, maybe I should have mentioned it prior, and Anita, I'm not doing this to engage a conversation, but, um, sorry. The, um, um, there's the Midcoast Housing Trust that I've kind of, um, been kind of a founding member of. Um, that's moving forward pretty rapidly, it's gonna be a regional, um, land trust, but more of a housing trust. Um, that is looking at, um, addressing the, um, housing issue. We're not looking to compete with Habitat, if you will, um, we are trying to do something a little different, similar to what is on North Haven. Or MDI, um, that works to, um, develop. Um, housing and keep housing, um, affordable in the long term, uh, through affordability covenant, so that's pretty. Pretty cool, it's happening, um, it's getting off the ground, it's probably a three-year process, to be honest with you, to get an organization up and running, but it's moving forward. I just wanted for that. That's it, go ahead. Chris O.
Uh, I was just thinking that, you know, during the last couple. Project reviews, we've had a lot of conversations about looking at some of the. Height limits and other things on harbor. Waterfront and some of those things, this would be a good time to start maybe digging into that.
Yeah, and that is.
Yeah, you read my mind on that, I actually, I hate to confess this, but I woke up in the middle of the night, the other night. And that actually was on my mind, like, why have we not dealt with that yet? Um, I think that's a good idea, um, we, we, we have talked about, um, doing things for, you know. Climate change and, um, you know, the other, the other committee seems to have fizzled out a little bit, Jeremy, I'll just note. Um, I'm not sure what's going on on your end, I just haven't been involved in any of the discussions on the flood, the flood, uh, resiliency project. But, um, I would put my weight behind that as well, that if there is something that we could do just along the shoreline. And raising height requirements, um, by two feet. I mean, I just saw, uh, something that said that we're looking at one feet of, one foot of sea level rise now by twenty fifty. Which, you know, it's only one report and it's not totally outside the lines of what other people are talking about. But that's on a faster scale than what other people have been generally.
I mean.
Rock. Baseline.
Brock Marine is telling all customers who are doing anything, whether it's modifying or anything else, to go at least three feet above.
Right.
Whatever they can, wherever they can, and we can't, and that's not even allowable right now, so.
Yeah, I will say, I wanted to stress that, that doesn't mean that some of this isn't in the works, I am working on these things. Um, they're just not ready to bring to you folks yet, um, and I just need some more time, like. The state right now, I think there was a hearing yesterday, um, in Augusta on. Shoreland zoning and floodplain on building height. Um, there's some con- conflicts between the ordinances, and there's a bill in the legislature to address that. Which, once that happens, that will be easier for us to adopt something. Um, but, yes, and then, and then allowing higher hi- height is, is good for us. Uh, in the downtown areas, um, to address climate, working on.
The other piece, what I was sort of saying, there was not just height, but sort of taking a look at other. Ordinances that maybe aren't state, you know, that, with all the conversations about what's gonna happen in harbor zone. Going forward, what other issues do we need to look at in those, in our zoning for that area?
Yeah.
Might, might be, um, helpful to bring in a couple people from the Harbor Committee. Maybe.
Yeah, we've got Mark from the Harbor Committee on our board, which is.
Who've talked about, like, raising the height limits of peers.
Yeah, I don't know, have they, have they discussed that, Mark?
No.
No?
Not lately, doesn't come up really, um.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think this is an important discussion, and, and I will say, Jeremy, of course, we know that you are working on these things. Um, I will say from my perspective for the board, um, waiting for the state legislature to act. Um, while it may be, uh, easier for us, doesn't preclude us from acting on our own. And so, uh.
Right.
You know, I, I'm comfortable taking, taking a lead if we want to, um.
That's good.
This, because we are a seaside committee, a community, and, um, we hopefully, you know, it would be great if we could. You know, lead the charge rather than follow the herd.
Alright, sounds good.
Well, the, the other thing I was gonna say, and I said this ages ago, is that it's not just. You know, we need to think of it not just in terms of the harbor and the ocean front, but it's rivers and lakes and all of that flooding. And those issues too, and what we allow and don't. So it's.
Agreed.
And I think that's the thing, it's like, you know, you're absolutely right, that, that we're gonna be, and that's. You know, to be fair, that was sort of the idea of the flood resiliency project, right, it was to look at it more holistically. But then we get to a situation where, you know, we see these projects being built right on the shore. And, or right on the harbor, and what can we do to, to, to make that? To, I mean, it's, it's almost like triage at this point. And that's sort of what I'm thinking, is maybe we should just start triaging things instead of trying to fix everything. Because if, in trying to fix everything, we end up getting stuck in this constant wheel of like, well, the state's gonna act. We might act after the state acts, and then, you know, whatever, but meanwhile permits come through before the board.
Yeah.
And you approve them and they can't raise the height, go ahead, Jeremy.
I did get, um, I do have a new, and I think this is a good start, is, uh, the new, a new flood ordinance, flood management ordinance. Which addresses what that base flood elevation is, so if you're gonna do new construction or substantial reven- re- renovation. Or rehabilitation, right now, it's one foot above that flood level is where your finished floor is. Now, the new mo- a model ordinance that I have is I've got it at two feet, and, um. You know, I think the conversation should be had of, should we do two or three feet?
I'm leaning three, for sure.
Understood, and I think that's where, so since that's in the works, what I'm gonna try to do is bring that forward kind of in the same. Path as some zoning amendments that will address height, so that you can facilitate. You know, we can move both of these forward at the same time, and my hope would be November on that one.
Yeah, and I think that's a reasonable goal, uh, and I think, uh, you know, I don't know how everybody feels, but I think it's. A, a valuable discussion to have.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, raising the flood height like that will reduce premiums too for people in the flood zone.
Yep.
Community has. Your community's adopted a standard above the, the minimum. Um, there will be a reduction in flood insurance.
That's good.
All right, well, thank you all for a very productive meeting and, you know, fairly on point. Um, we did have a little interlude there, um. I will, uh, say we're now gonna, you know, entertain Chris, Chris O's next motion, I'm not sure if we ever need it, but I love it.
Well, anyone else can, can jump, jump in too, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, Anita.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Chris O.
Yeah, hi.
Mark.
Hi.
It's an eye from me, we are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Congratulations, Pat, you made a whole meeting.
Oh, right.
Does she, does she get a, does she get a, a medal?
I'm not sure, I mean, I'll have to think about it.
She gets rum cake.
Oh, yeah, the rum cake.